Question, can I take this?
Wow, this is a challenge. You have to sit down for me to get by.
I think you could show it.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Shana Tovah. I'm David Astorov. I'm the president of the congregation. And because of my high office, they gave me a real tough job. And that is introducing Rabbi Haberman to all of you. I practice hard. Well, thank you for joining us for this Yom Kippur study session. These sessions are designed to enhance the spirit of Yom Kippur and enable all of us congregants to enrich our personal reflections on the High Holy days. I'm pleased to be with you today to introduce the session, "What Makes Life Worth Living", with our own senior emeritus Rabbi Joshua Haberman. I don't know. Each year on Yom Kippur, we are blessed to hear Rabbi Haberman share insights from his life and his love of learning. This year is no different. Today, we'll reflect on the question, "What Makes Life Worth Living"? Rabbi, we thank you for teaching us today, and we look forward to being your students once again.
Thank you very much. It is with real surprise that I face you. I've now been retired over 30 years. And I never thought of reaching my age of 97 years. What about retirement? It's a case of mind over matter. If you don't mind, it don't matter. One of the good things in retirement is that for the last 30 years, I have not received a single complaint. My colleague Rabbi Wolberg of Baltimore told me that he instructed the telephone operator to offer callers five options. For the executive director, click one. For the religious school principal, click two. For the youth group leader, click three. For the rabbi, four. And for complaints about the rabbi, click five, six, seven, and eight. Well, it's good to be here. When you reach my age, three years short of 100, I can't believe it. I married, thank God, a young wife. You wonder, what is the meaning of life? Why should I want to live any longer? Is life worth living? That's a serious question. We need to ponder it not just today, but many days to come. What do we mean by "worth living"? We're not raising a philosophic question about the phenomenon of life in the universe, but rather the very personal question, whether your life as a human being is so joyful and pleasurable and fulfilling that you'd want to stay alive a little longer. Limiting the question to the worthwhileness of your personal life, I'm asking, is life a good thing? Is it really a gift, a benefit from God? Although Judaism has much too good to say about being alive, you'd be surprised to learn that the opposite opinion is also expressed forcefully in Judaism. In the Bible's first characterization of human life, we read this grim judgment about human destiny. "In a sweat of thy face shalt thou eat bread, till thou return unto the ground; for out of this it wast thou taken, for thus thou art, and to thus shalt you return." That's pretty grim. Prospect's not good. In the biblical book of Job, Job exclaims, "Perish the day I was born." Rousseau paraphrased that. In his words, "The first of my misfortune was my birth." Judaism voices two contradictory assessments of life. On the one hand, we bless God with the familiar sheikh, "Yanove kimanove yano lasmana ze." God be blessed that he's kept us alive, sustained us, and brought us to this day. On the other hand, the Bible, in the words of Kohlitz, says, "Better is the day of death than the day of birth." The academies of Hillel and Shema Yisrael disagreed on every issue they ever discussed. But after a debate of two and a half years on the question of worthwhileness of life, both came to the grim conclusion that not to be born at all would be preferable. "But who has such luck?" said a Jewish widow. Perhaps one in a million. Is there anything worthwhile in life? What about happiness? Nowhere in the Bible are we promised happiness. In its first chapter, the Bible tells of the creation of man. "And God created man in his own image, male and female, and he blessed them. And God said to them, 'Be fertile and increase; fill the earth and master it; rule all the living things that creep on earth.'" This is the only biblical statement about the purpose of human existence. We were not created to enjoy pleasures, but to perform a God-given task, to be God's deputy in controlling and mastering the earth. In other words, life is not a gift, but a God-given task. What can you do to make your life worthwhile? First, among my suggestions is to set yourself achievable goals. Don't reach for the stars, but do what is in your power to do without any supernatural help. If you can earn a living, if you can raise a family, if you continue your educational learning, keep your body in good shape, and stay in reasonably good health, you are a success. A prayer in our daily morning service lists a number of things which enhance life. Honor your parents, which is the model of good family relations. Hospitality, visiting the sick, helping a woman find a husband, and finding a man, finding a woman, promoting peace between persons. Last is the surprising statement that the study of Torah equals all of those. How? Why? Because the Torah is a lifetime map for good conduct. As for the larger purpose of human existence, the Bible says, "It is to enrich the earth and manage all things on earth." This is another way of saying, "Develop civilization." In this respect, we have a long way to go. We pollute the air, and in the sea, we denude the forests. And we may use the nuclear weapons held in storage by a number of nations, which will destroy all of nature. On the other hand, we also fight diseases. We extend our lifetime and increase the productivity of the earth. It boils down to a question of moral willpower. Whichever we want to do, do we want to use our resources for the good and plenty of mankind or for destruction? This brings us to our purpose as Jews. We were given the Torah and the task of spreading its teachings to preserve life, to eliminate hunger and disease, and put an end to mutual destruction by promoting peace on earth. The Bible surprises us, however, with Kohlitz's blunt, materialistic advice. Eat your bread in ladders, drink your wine in joy, wear clean clothes, and perfume your head, and enjoy happiness with a woman you love all your days of your life. For that alone is what you can get out of life. In other words, get all the pleasure you can, here and now. So far, I've given two answers to the question, "Is life worthwhile", a positive and a negative answer. Those who incline to say, "Yes, life is worth living", will list a number of conditions. Yes, yes, life is worthwhile if you have at least three things: health, self-support, and at least one person you love and who loves you. What if you lack one or several of these conditions and are miserable? Would you still consider life worthwhile? Consider the life of Helen Keller, one of the most deprived persons that ever lived, where at the early age of 19 months, a year and a half, became blind, deaf, and mute. Until the age of seven, she acted according to her own words, "Worse than an animal." But then, under the guidance of a marvelous teacher, Anne Sullivan, she overcame the adversity of blindness and deafness and learned to speak and even earned a bachelor degree cum laude from Ratcliffe. That's an amazing thing. What made Helen Keller love life despite all her handicaps? What made her life worth living? We find a clue in her remarks which may be helpful to us. So long as the memory of certain beloved friends lives in my heart, I shall say, "Life is good." It was her uplifting relationship with several persons which, despite handicaps, made life worth living for her. For that reason, I would say, the most important task we have is to develop relationships and to cultivate them and to preserve them and, wherever possible, to improve them. You yourself can make life worth living by choosing causes to serve. Helen Keller became an ardent activist for peace, social justice. She published 14 books, 475 essays and speeches, and, hard to believe, she lectured in 35 countries throughout the world. She met with world leaders such as Churchill, Nehru, Golda Meir, urging the building of schools for the blind and helping the handicapped. Kohlitz's advice to us is to enjoy now whatever gives you pleasure. I advocate an attitude which I like to call "now-ism". Don't wait. Don't postpone the things you want to do. Today's opportunity may be lost tomorrow. Returning to our basic question, "Is life worth living?", the answer depends on the choices you make. You can enhance your sense of worth of life by choosing a cause to serve. From tutoring a child or agitating against the atrocities of war, there are countless causes to serve. Any one of these causes can make you feel that your life is worth living. But nothing can give you security against any number of adversities. Our existence is always vulnerable, precarious. Never forget, at any moment, a good life can turn into disablement and misery. Uncertainty is man's lot. How should we react to this truth? With humility, to be aware of your dependence on factors out of your control, and be grateful for every good moment in life. Gratitude. Gratitude is the nearest thing to happiness. List the things for which you are grateful. Be a good, healthy exercise. You are blessed if you do not suffer illness, if you are self-supporting, and if there is someone who's dear to you. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I'm open to rebuttal or any question, anything you want to say. And if I have an answer, I'll share it. Thank you. Okay, can you hear me? Okay, then, let's go. There's a question. What's that? Do we have the right not to choose life? In other words, euthanasia or something like that? I guess, yes, I would say yes. I think there may come a point in anybody's life where you say, "It's enough, I want to go." So let him. Any other questions? Any other questions? Yeah?
How is it that there was another Venus-born Jew, Sigmund Freud, and he said that the meaning of life, or what gave purpose to his life, was work that I like and people that I love? What do you think of that?
I'd just like to repeat the last point. A friend of this young lady here said, "The meaning of life is work and people you love." Work that I like. I don't know if I like any work, but work that I like and people I love or who are dear to me. Well, I think that's not a bad statement. It's not complete. I mean, I don't think the meaning of my life would all be in work and possibly the people I love. I think that would be the more accurate statement. It is a dreary existence if there's no one you care for and no one cares for you. I think we need, as a minimum, for the enjoyment of life, someone with whom we can share, someone who is dear to us and to whom we are dear. And so, never underestimate the opportunity to develop relationships. Do all you can. It's worth every sacrifice you make. Any other question? Yeah?
When you were growing up in Vienna, did you hear people preaching the things that you're preaching to us today? And also, when you are... How does the speech that you give today about life differ from maybe one that you would have done in rabbinical school?
Well, certainly would be different. If it weren't, that would be terrible. It would be stagnation. We should be ready to change our mind on any number of things. And I'm willing to change my mind any time, who knows? What about life in Vienna? Vienna is a beautiful city, still is. But the people are miserable. I did not like the Viennese. They were anti-Semitic. I experienced anti-Semitism from the age of six. And I had to fight my way through the streets at times to fight off the anti-Semitic kids who were playing on the playground. Be that as it may, I have no desire to be back in Vienna at any time and only one who visited. But I must admit, the city is gorgeous. Beautiful city. Any other? Yeah? I didn't hear that, so repeat it.
I just said, on behalf of everybody here, we certainly look forward to hearing your lecture next year.
Oh, next year. I wonder if I'm going to be alive next year. Don't forget to be two years before 100. You don't want to hear an old man of 100 talk.
Hello, yeah. Last year, I asked a question. Last year, I asked a question, and what advice would you give a 60-year-old? And I remember a few things you said was, "Hang around with younger people." And you also said, "There are times in life that you have to endure." I wondered if you could give some wisdom of how do you endure during difficult times?
Well, we underestimate the need to endure. Don't despair, but be ready to suffer. Yes, endurance is all. Reinhard Rilke, the great German poet, was asked, "What is life?", and he said, "Endurance is all." Yes, life, there's a lot of need for endurance. Much of life is suffering. A lot of people keep it secret to themselves. You're very fortunate if you have anybody around to whom you can share your anguish, your pain. But there's no question that you cannot live a life... I mean, you're very fortunate. Most unusual, if you have a life without pain. It's not likely to be. Most often, we have to pass through certain passages of pain and anguish and disappointment and whatnot. So, thank God, we can do it. Most of us can do it. And I hope that you have the strength to do so. Any other questions? Yes?
What is your guidance on limiting self-indulgence? You've spoken about being happy. And what about some governance on that?
What about self-indulgence? What do you mean by that self-indulgence? You mean looking for pleasures, hedonism? Is that what you're looking for?
Whatever you say, I would like to hear.
Well, that puts an awful burden on me. Any other question?
Rabbi, it's always a pleasure and a privilege to hear you. Many years ago, as a young man, when I was an undergraduate in Chicago, I had the privilege to speak a couple times with a colleague who is a couple years your senior, Rabbi Sholman. And he likewise began his studies in Europe. I believe he was from Munich. Do you believe there is any metaphysical or theological message to the fact that we still have the privilege to learn from you and Rabbi Sholman, given the circumstances of the past? given that you began your studies before the Omschloss?
Do I still have anything to say or offer to people because Rabbi Sholman and I are Europeans by origin and upbringing? I can't judge that. I don't know if there's anything I can say that would be helpful to you, but I'll try the best I can, and if I don't know what to say, I'll ask Maxine. She tells me.
Thank you, Rabbi. One question. Do people who are psychologically disabled, in need of therapy, have the right to commit suicide?
I'm not an... You heard the question, I suppose. Do the people who are in misery have the right to suicide? I'm not an advocate of suicide. I think I'm an advocate of endurance. You have to learn to suffer. There is no way you can escape suffering to a certain degree. Not too much of it, but some. It just is that way. And suicide, in my opinion, is cowardice, is running away from life. Now, I can imagine situations when life is so terrible, so painful, that you'd rather be dead than alive. Well, I think that's a question of each case. I don't want to generalize. Yeah?
Rabbi, if you were giving this talk to a room full of children, would you be saying the same thing?
Would I give this talk to a room full of children?
If you were giving this talk to a room full of children, would you say the same thing?
I think I would. Let's not underestimate the capacity of children to understand. Child, what's... There's a difference between a child of four and fourteen. I'm talking about children with reasonable capacity to understand life situations. I wouldn't hesitate. I think it's important that children should know what troubles, what difficulties may often happen in life and to face it and cope with it.
There's a question over here.
You said in the opening that I think that sort of continuing to learn and educate yourself was important. Can you tell us things that you're trying to figure out for yourself now, trying to understand, and how do you go about doing it?
I'd rather tell you what I don't understand. I have, over the years, particularly in the last ten, twenty years, been thinking as much as I can about the meaning of life. Do you know what my answer is? I haven't gotten it. I do not know what is the meaning of life. I think we are put into this world not exactly knowing why and wherefore... I will change that, not knowing at all why and wherefore. And so, life is a task. It's not made for pleasure. And fortunate are those who can avoid the agonies and the pains that so often come with our precarious existence.
Can I ask for a follow-up?
What's that?
Do you find it useful to ask yourself to continue to explore that question? Or do you think it's a race of time?
How about to continue to explore this question? You have no choice. What else can you do? What else can you do? The fact of the matter is, we are put into this world not knowing why, for what purpose, and in fact, we don't know if anything has a purpose. But we do the best we can. And I'm proud as a Jew that Judaism does not offer quick answers for anything. Most of the issues of life are taken up in various contexts in Judaism, but very often, you're left without an answer, and that is honest. That is true. We do not have answers for everything. Yeah?
Excuse me. Wait, we're going to start over here, sorry. I'll be right there.
That's all right, mine will take a second.
Okay. What about religion?
How about religion, how it relates to happiness?
How does religion relate to happiness? Not necessarily, but I must say this. What's religion? Religion is simply answering the deeper questions about life. And the fact of the matter is that often, or most often, the answer we get is inadequate. So you've got to keep learning. That's the only choice you have. There was somebody there, I think.
I have the same question.
She had the same question. Questions, anybody?
Could you raise your voice, I can't hear you.
At this age now, Rabbi, is there an afterlife? Will you and Maxine be together?
Is the question, is there an afterlife? I have no faintest idea. In fact, I want to tell you something. I'm not worried about it. I'm just worried about this life, not the afterlife. I can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you better.
Okay, good, good. You know mortality rates?
Do I have more time?
No.
Well, not endless time, but I have some time, yeah.
Which means that in the end, we live forever. In the end, I mean, soon they're going to live forever because the rates are going down all the time.
Somebody's going to have to... Would you please say it?
So the question is, if they're going to live forever, is it blessing or curse?
Could you say it?
With mortality rates going down all the time, we end up living forever. So is that a blessing or a curse?
Would you say that again, please? Give me time to think.
With people living longer, is living so long a blessing or a curse?
You know, honestly, I can't be so sure that living longer is a blessing. I mean, I have preached about as long as most people ever hoped to be, ninety-seven going on ninety-eight. I'm not sure it's a blessing. I think that in a lot of years of life, it's not a blessing. It's a torture. Because so many things you would want to do or had been able to do, you can't. You have to learn to sacrifice, to give up, and that's a painful loss. So I'm not so sure it's a good thing to live much longer than health and well-being allows you to be. Yeah?
So at ninety-seven going on ninety-eight, what else do you want to do?
Not much. Now, you know, I'm asking myself. I've done just about everything most people do. I like sports, I used to love skiing and all kinds of things, and I had an interesting life. But the question, what more can I do? I'm puzzled. If I can just be around, be a companion to my wife and children, and I'm proud of my family. I've got four children, fifteen grandchildren, twenty-three great-grandchildren. I find much satisfaction in the family. It could be otherwise, you know? The family can be the source of your greatest discomfort and pain. Thank God, I can say with pride that I'm proud of my family.
Rabbi Haberben, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So nice to see you again every year. Please keep coming. Perhaps, would you like to weigh in on the current state of presidential politics?
On the state of...
Somebody had to do.
The present candidates for the presidency? I'm not sure I like either of them. But I think that presently, I'm going to be honest, I'm not campaigning. I'd prefer Hillary over Trump. At least, what she says most often makes sense. And Trump is, well, is an uncertain trumpet.
Rabbi, you're great today, as usual. Is Trump a member of this congregation, first question? Second question is, why are so many comedians Jewish? Do you think that's to take away the pain and the anti-Semitism, et cetera? Appreciate your insight and answers.
Would you repeat the gist of your question?
Is Mr. Trump a member of this congregation, first question? Second question, why are so many comedians Jewish? Do you think it's to take away the pain of anti-Semitism and...
Oh, that's an interesting question. Why are so many comedians Jewish? Well, why not? Why not? I think I enjoy the humor of Jewish, or for that matter, non-Jewish comedians. Life is a mixed bag. There are a lot of difficulties, problems, pains in life. I think we need humor to tide us over some of these critical times, and we should have more. The world would be a better place if comedians were in charge.
Rabbi, as you remember, we used to have lunch about once a month, and we would always talk politics, so I'll ask you a follow-up political question, and that is, why have we never had a Jewish president?
I think we... Why have we never had a Jewish president? We might get one very soon. If Michael Bloomberg of New York were to run, I'd vote for him, and there might be a good chance that he would be elected. I think that the possibility of a Jewish president is very real. I think that the anti-Semitism that would prevent it seems to have faded. And it depends on who the person is that's running. But I have a good feeling about that. I think that we might still in our lifetime see a Jewish president. Any other comment?
Rabbi, Rabbi, I'm over here. Thank you, again. Sometimes, when we are faced with life and trying to give it meaning, we make bad choices, and that leaves people with regret. Any thoughts about regret?
Regrets? Yeah, we all have regrets. But you have to live with that. The fact of the matter is that you can't do everything you want to do, so you regret that you can't do it. But the fact of the matter is, we have to learn to settle for less than we want. That's a good rule to go.
Rabbi, would you give us in the future a reading list that you think no one should leave this earth without having fulfilled?
Would I give you a reading list? Not really. I think you'd get a better answer from a librarian. Well, any more, are we finished? I think there was a gentleman over there who wanted to say something. Am I mistaken? Well, you're a good audience over here.
What about, what do you feel is going to happen in the future regarding world affairs?
What will happen in the future regarding world affairs? Well, you think I'm God? It would be an enormous case of chutzpah for me, an ordinary human being, to make predictions about the future. One thing is certain, namely, the future is uncertain. Go by that. Thank you.